We'll start off tonight with an easy question. And we'll start with Jesse. Jesse, why are you running for -- remember, this is a 30-second question. Why are you running to represent District 1 in the City Council?
Well, thank you for having me, everyone, and thank you, everyone, for showing up. I really appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. This is a really important thing for me. I'm actually the accidental politician up here. I serve on the State Advisory Council homelessness because I was homeless when I was a kid. And so it is something that I'm very passionate about solving, and I really feel that we need a new direction here in Seattle.
(phone rings) (laughter)
(inaudible) All right.
Timer? We'll play.
Yeah. My one?
Yes.
Great. Hello, and I too thank everybody for being here. I think this is a really important way to start this campaign off. The issues of homelessness and addiction and public safety are very much on the forefront of people's minds. I am running to serve you as your City Council member for District 1 because I know that I work for you. I work on policy issues and budget issues, but I also use my voice to lend to yours so that you can work on the things that make your community better, whether or not--
Hello, thank you. It's inspiring how many people have come out tonight. It really speaks to the importance of this election. The reason I ran is because -- the reason I'm running is because I feel like I have unique qualifications and work experience to serve on City Council. I worked for the SPD for over a decade. I served in policy development during the dissent decree. Then I went back to patrol. I worked downtown in Seattle during the night. I saw what had happened during the five-and-a-half years that I was off the street, and I'm very inspired to try to implement new solutions to these issues we're all facing.
Also, thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. You know, Seattle can do better. When I ran in 2015, we had a lot of issues we were talking about, and to be honest, I haven't seen any of them improve in the last four years. I've got good skills as a physicist, as a public defender, and as a businessperson. And I think there are incredible resources in this city that go unrealized every day. And I don't think we have a handle, really, on how to deal with our problems, and I want to change that.
Hello. Thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Isaiah Obi. I am a Seattle resident my entire life. I live in West Seattle, live in South Seattle, and I love my city, and I just know how to implement policy that will elevate the quality of life of every multivariate demographic in my city. Thank you.
For question two, I'm sorry, that's -- yeah, this would be question two. Yeah, Jim, it's all right. Our second question, one. On the issue of -- we'll start with Councilmember Herbl on this question. On the issue of homelessness, what do you think the current City Council got right, and what did the City Council get wrong over the past four years? If elected in 2019, what policies would you promote to reverse the trend of increasing homelessness? And remember, everyone, you've got one minute on this answer.
I think the answer to what we got right and what we got wrong is the same. Last year, we invested more money in building affordable housing, but we still aren't building enough affordable housing. The answer to homelessness is always housing, regardless of a person's condition, whether or not they are a person who has a disability, a mental health challenge, or they have a substance abuse issue. The answer is always housing. And Housing First is an important model that the city is increasingly moving towards. The model allows the housing to address the basic needs so that people can address some of the underlying conditions that led them to homelessness in the first place. We need more of it. We need a greater emphasis on services along with that housing, coupled with that housing. And really, the big problem that we're facing is growing income inequality that is leading to greater and greater numbers of people falling into homelessness. We also need to focus on eviction reform. More than 2,000 people become homeless every year. We need to figure out a way to adjust the conditions that reach that.
Okay, Brendan?
Thank you. I believe what City Council got right was they acknowledged that we do indeed have a problem. We are, in fact, in crisis of the city. What they've gotten wrong is the solution to that problem. I've seen too much emphasis on unsustainable, undignified solutions: tent encampments, tiny villages, RV lots. What we need is something that actually elevates people into a stable and dignified lifestyle. What I would like to do is implement a series of immediately available transitional housing facilities, similar to a FEMA tent model, across the city. I would like to implement a triage process where people who appear to be experiencing homelessness are sent to the appropriate facility to suit their needs. Obviously, people with families have different needs than people who are mentally ill, and I would like that option to be immediately available. If people choose not to accept that option, then we need to be able to feel comfortable enforcing the law. In some cases, people are committing criminal trespass, pedestrian interference, and we need to have both carrot and stick as we address this problem.
What I think the city has gotten right is that they declared this an emergency. What I think the start of the problem that the city has gotten wrong is that I've seen no urgency out of that. To call it a crisis but not act with urgency is an issue. And yes, we need more affordable housing across the city. However, we cannot name this a crisis of affordable housing. This is a crisis that involves mental health issues, people that are going untreated, undiagnosed, and uncared for. And the same thing with substance abuse. It's people that are self-medicating their mental health issues and not getting support. As a public defender for the last 15 years, I have had thousands of clients that are with people on the street. We need to use our criminal justice system to be able to provide a safety net so that it's not just a revolving door of people going back onto the street and doing the same things. We have to have community to support them. We have to have the programs to support them, and we can't keep continuing supporting contractors that are not delivering what they're supposed to and helping people get out of this situation.
So the solution for affordable housing and the homeless situation is we have to get rid of the -- I'm a Seattle resident. I've been in Seattle since King County days. I'm only running for a candidate, a candidate of policy. It's just that the homeless situation is about the handouts and the child behavior. We need to make sure transparency with the financial situation, to where does the money go to help our -- our workers as small business owners, and the money that we donate to the campaigns or to the programs have to be transparent for all of us. So where does our money go? And the solution is to help the homeless is that we have to come with a one group program that clears up the solution instead of giving out entitlements and all the handouts. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an issue I really care about, and what I don't want to come across -- we hear a lot of solutions, but it's an oversimplification of the issue. There are so many different reasons for homelessness, and affordable housing is a piece of that. Justice is a piece of that. I was homeless because my mom was escaping domestic violence from my father. It wasn't our fault. We just needed a place to go so that we were safe. And we have those people out there. And so there is a fundamental misunderstanding with how this city is dealing with it. A solution is not always take more money and throw it at the solution without there being accountability or transparency about how those service providers are spending that money. We need to focus and really go to the core issues of what is driving homelessness. I can tell you this: We need compassion, but we also need justice to make everyone in the city feel safe.
Okay, question number two. We will start with Brendan. A recently published report, it has been in the news lately, written by former Mayor A. Scott Lindsay, that focused on 100 prolific criminal offenders in Seattle. According to this report, the vast majority have had an addiction problem, and the criminal justice system has failed to properly serve them. If elected, what would you do to improve the criminal justice system so that it helps people suffering with addiction and also ensures that communities are safe? And by the way, any candidate who needs me to reread the question, just feel free asking.
Thank you. So I've read that report. I actually have known Scott for about five years. I met him last week. I recognized some of the excerpts from those reports, and he actually told me he saw I had approved of some of them when I was working downtown. So I'm very familiar with this population and this issue. And I'm sorry, I'm going to need the second half of the question.
All right. If elected, what would you do to improve the criminal justice system so that it helps people suffering with addiction and also ensures that communities are safe?
Thank you. So part of the issue that Scott Lindsay identified in his report is the revolving door and the lack of accountability that comes out of the City Attorney's Office. I believe that as City Council member, I could set the tone for the expectations of the community, that we don't just want people sent back out the other side, but we do want them plugged into the services. We do want them held accountable so that it doesn't become a situation where they're sent back out and commit the thefts and the shoplifting and the robberies that he outlined, support the narcotics habits that they have. Basically, it comes down to accountability and it comes down to set an expectation to the City Attorney's Office that we want people held accountable for their crimes.
Thank you. Yeah, I have seen the report, and the fact is, I have dealt with, you know, not specifically those people, but people like that in the criminal justice system. This is why we need to properly fund probation services and social services, because people can't just get released back onto the street. They need to be released into a transitional program that's able to address the underlying root causes, which tend to be mental health issues and substance abuse issues. And that if someone doesn't have help, doesn't have support, they're going to reoffend. And also, it's not just an issue of the City Attorney, because a lot of these crimes, the drug crimes, are set up through the King County Prosecutor's Office as expedited felonies. They get bumped down, and they become a misdemeanor. And 90 or 365 days is the most anybody can spend in jail, but jail is not answering the problem. This is about services. This is about following up and making sure that people are just not released and let go. And we've got to work on the community courts, the drug courts, and the mental health courts to support it, because those are the answers that we have.
Can you repeat the question one more time, sir? If elected, what would you -- we referenced the -- in fact, I think I've got a copy of it right here on my computer. The published report on repeat offenders and how they cycle through the system and then are kicked out and then reoffend frequently, sometimes on average, 100 people they study 16 times a year. What would you do if elected to both treat on the addiction end of things and treat on the -- and help on the public safety end of things?
I would answer that solution. So I'm a Seattle resident. People who are being incarcerated on addiction or behavior, we would have a DSHS worker or a council or case manager rehabilitate them while they're incarcerated and give them a tribute plan. We set a judicial system. Instead of kicking them out and giving them a judicial release date, we incarcerate them or who are incarcerated already, we give them a case manager or a human service worker to help rehabilitate themselves in Seattle. Because we do have the money to rehabilitate every individual if we work together.
Jesse?
Yeah, can you repeat it again?
Sure. If elected, what would you do to improve the criminal justice system so that it helps people suffering with addiction and also ensures that communities are safe?
Yeah, we really need some support services. I stopped the other day and spoke with a police officer from the South Precinct in South Park, and he really felt deflated. He felt his job, there was no meaning to it, because he continuously said, "I continue to arrest people. I continue to arrest people, and charges do not get filed." We have a system that's broken here. I know we have overcrowded, but it is not okay to release individuals back onto the street like the guy who almost threw the lady off the bridge. That is not acceptable. We knew we had mental health problems. We needed to address it at that time, and we really need to be working with our community to make sure all of the services are provided. Health, mental health services, is a huge need for us in Seattle, and we should have already taken care of it, and we needed to make that the top priority.
This is a really urgent issue. I've read the report. I've reached out to the Business Improvement Area Director that commissioned the report, and I commit to work on this issue. The report is very similar to a program that the King County Courts have called Know Your Faces, and I would really work to replicate many of the interventions that they use over a King County Court. Those are things like medically assisted treatment. It involves also a number of diversion programs, and it's also working with LEED. LEED is the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. We fund LEED through the city as well. We recently increased funding this year to offer services to the Southwest Precinct also. The prolific offenders, there are only 2% of that whole cohort that were actually LEED participants, so that really is a good indicator that LEED participants don't reoffend. The studies show that they actually reoffend 58% less than other group studies.
Okay. Brendan, no, I think Phil. You're first on the next one. Can everyone -- oh, there you go. If elected, how do you make yourself and the City Hall accessible to everyone? What will you do to ensure engaging in local politics is made easy and convenient, such as mail-in voting?
Well, there's a couple of things. First, I will actually have an office here in District 1 and potentially even two different locations where we will have a staff member here each week available. And obviously, as everybody knows, at least 47 or 48 Wednesdays of the year, you can find me at CalRig, and I will still be there. You can talk to me. My cell phone number was in the voter's pamphlet last time. You can reach out, you can find me. I'm always around here. The other thing is utilizing technology. We need to find ways that people don't have to just go to City Hall so that they show up and there's a long line, that they get stuck down at the bottom of the stairs, not being able to listen, not being able to participate. We are in 2019. We have the ability to reach out and make it accessible to people by computer, by smartphone, put out, you know, Zoom rooms inside the district, places where people can participate without having to go. And this is a big part of our problem. We're not reaching out to everybody. We're not making sure that everybody's included. So I would do that. And the biggest thing is just be here all the time where you can find me.
Can you repeat the question one more time, sir? Not a problem. If elected, how will you make yourself and City Hall accessible to everyone? What will you do to ensure engaging in local politics is made easy and convenient, ideas such as mail-in voting?
So I'm the youth. So I'm going to represent the youth. So I would create an app where anybody could click on their phone from Android to Apple, where anybody -- and we have representatives monitor that, where anybody have to go plane or information to reach City Hall, and it would go directly to every email database of all City Councils or mayors. And it would be simply effective so all of us communicate, and that's what we need now.
Would you like to question again? If elected, how will you make yourself and City Hall accessible to everyone? What will you do to ensure engaging in local politics is made easy and convenient, such as mail-in voting?
And it's 2019. We do not have an excuse to not have great communication with our representatives. And I don't know if we need to create an app. There's so many tools that we have available to host video calls, to have a weekly conference call, that anyone can dial in and pose their questions. They can submit questions beforehand and just have that communication back to everyone. What we saw on video that was posted a few days ago with the gentleman who went all the way down to City Hall, just wanted to be heard, that was not acceptable. Plain and simple, we're a representative of Republicans. The job of City Hall, the job of your representatives, is to represent you, and that's it. There's never not enough time to represent you.
And on that, I urge people to look at seconds 22 and seconds 150. Those are the two times that the council members are shown, and you can clearly see that I'm attentively listening and watching. So I would continue doing my office hours as I have been doing. I have open office hours from the afternoon until the evening. People either drop in or make appointments. I move around the district, so I'm not always in one place. Sometimes I'm over at the West Seattle Senior Center, sometimes I'm over in Delridge, and sometimes I'm in South Park. And it's done a really effective way. Also, during the Seattle Squeeze, we've done a lot of telecommuting, which means I've been working from the district a lot more. And then finally, accessibility needs a couple of different things, right? It doesn't just mean making it easy for people to come to City Hall or interact with their council members. It also means making sure that people with different abilities can participate, and I've led the council in making sure that our meetings have closed captioning, and I'm working more on more access issues like that.
I see two parts to that question. One is how can the council member be more accessible to the constituency? And I really have very little to add. I think we have office hours downtown. We also need to have convenient office hours within District 1, both West Seattle and South Park. Also, we need to engage on all the various social media platforms. We need to meet people where it's most convenient for them and not the other way around. The second part to that question is how can we allow people to assist, to participate in their government? And what I would like to do is implement something that we did at the Policy Unit at SPD, which is something called Shared Review. We developed a way to put our policy drafts online for the entire department to review and provide feedback on. And then we reviewed their feedback as we were developing the final draft, and we made a point to get back to every single officer who provided feedback, explaining what our rationale is for incorporating or not incorporating this feedback. And people found that to be very inspiring and very -- they felt very satisfied with that, so that's something else I would like to implement.
Okay, we're going to start the audience questions. I've got a whole staff over here. Isaiah, you could be the first on the list. What would you do to make it legal to build homes at a density that would house all Seattleites?
I would change it from residential, single-family zone variations to multi-level units, and I would add, I would add that people can -- I would give them tax breaks, or I would add developers -- I'm not sure. Repeat the question again?
Sure. What would you do to make it legal to build homes at a density that would house an all and the person underlined all twice, that would house all Seattleites?
I would change the zone variations. So they already passed the HALA Act, so I think they've already done that, but I would support that.
I think we have an absolute lot of work to do. We have a beautiful community. We have more people that want to move into this community than we have housing for. We tried to do a mother-in-law, just to put in a hood system in my popcorn factory. It was 11 months, 11 months to try to get a permit for that. It's not acceptable. We may change zoning, we may do those things, but the way that we currently address our housing problem, we have to fix that. We have to focus and ensure that we have the availability to have people move into our neighborhood. And at the same time, we need to make sure gentrification doesn't happen. My popcorn factory is in South Park. My heart hurts because I worry that this is the next neighborhood to be gentrified just because it's filled with minorities, just because it's one of the last places that is somewhat expensive to live. We need to work harder and better to fit people into our community with affordable medium and affordable housing.
So as I think a lot of folks know, the City Council just recently voted on a city-wide rezone, and 30 -- or 27 neighborhoods throughout the city received an upzone in exchange for a requirement of developers contributing to affordable housing. So that is really focused on both coupling growth with resources for affordable housing. I think the next conversation, particularly in this district, about zoning is going to be around sound transit, transit area development. And we're going to be looking at additional increases of capacity specifically around the proposed transit areas and the transit stations. We'll be seeing that both in the Junction, and we'll be seeing it also in Delridge and further around in Avalon. So those are going to be the next round of conversations around zoning.
Thank you. In contemplating on this question, I think what is being asked is how can we house everybody who's currently living in the city limits, meaning how can we adjust our zoning to bring the homeless indoors? And I think that the HALA, as it currently stands, contains a huge exception that swallows the rule that I find very troubling, which it's designed to upzone for the purpose of creating affordable housing, but developers can buy out of that, so we don't end up with affordable housing. We end up with more money that I'm not sure where we're going to spend it. I'm not sure if the projects are under design or not. So trying to, trying to stick to the substance of that question, I think we need to go back to HALA, and we need to revise it to where our development is actually addressing the problem that we have.
Well, the first thing I would have done is a much better job with the MHA legislation. I mean, the truth of the matter is, the ILUa fees are way too low. It's not going to actually end up with any affordable housing being built. And one of the issues that's going to happen is you have a neighborhood that's going to get an upzone building, there's no possible affordable housing going into it because the ILUa fee is too low, and then that money doesn't actually end up having to stay in the neighborhood that took the development. So what the city should have done is it should have actually gone out to the neighborhoods one by one, done individualized neighborhood planning, respected the neighborhood plans that were actually in place, and listened to those people who live in those places that can say, "You know what? You could actually upzone more here and here and here without destroying the character of our neighborhood," and making sure that the money that gets spent in our neighborhood to upzone, because every time you destroy something old to put something new, it's not cheaper, it's not more affordable. So that money needs to be available for that community to get affordable housing. So there's a lot of things we can do with zoning, but we've got to get better at what we're doing already.
Recently, on Como, was an hour-long documentary entitled "Seattle Is Dying," and it focused on issues with the homeless, lip crime, and with pollution in Seattle, or at least litter in Seattle. The question from the audience is, what is your reaction to Como's "Seattle Is Dying" program? Jesse?
My heart absolutely broke when I saw that. And I work on homelessness, and I can tell you, it was, it opened my eyes to a few things. I don't agree with some of the statistics that were there. It was very narrow, but at the same time, it really tapped into the feeling we have here in Seattle, is that when we walk down the street, we see needles. When we go into our parks, we're finding out in the open drug use. This isn't acceptable. I am not talking about going out and cracking down and criminalizing everyone that uses, but to allow people, to allow dealers to go out there and have up to 30 hits of methamphetamine or heroin on them before the police do anything? That is not okay. We need to crack down on these dealers that are coming into our city and spreading this poison from everyone. My father died of this. We need to stop this.
So my response to this question is similar to the one related to the prolific offenders report. It is a reminder of the crisis that we see around us every day. The reaction I had to watching that was a visceral reaction, and I also had a lot of shame that a city of our wealth has people whose lives are in degradation and that their needs aren't being met, and that the suggestion is that the criminal justice system is the answer to that problem. Again, I'm going to go back to the concept of expanding LEED. That is a world-renowned program. It is successful, and it links people to the social services and the housing that they need in order to address their underlying issues. Also, there's a Ricky's Law is something that the state authorized. It allows for involuntary treatment, and that is something that we need to look at using once we have more drug treatment there.
Brendan?
Thank you. My reaction to seeing that documentary was two parts. One was sorrow, because this is the city I've lived in for almost 12 years, and this is where I raised my children. This is the only home they've known, and it really brings me a lot of pain that we've come to this. The other reaction was validation for my decision to run for City Council, because I feel like I honestly can provide assistance. The reaction, the interviews with the SPD officers and the various people, some of whom I know very well, are quite on point. Morale is very low. Officers don't feel like they're supported to do their job, but we can change that. We can change that by getting a new culture at City Hall, one that's supportive of law enforcement, one that makes our officers feel like if they go out and they make contacts for allegedly low-level offenses, which I would argue is somewhat of a misnomer, that they will be supportive and that we want them to do the job that they've been hired to do and that they do with a great deal of pride.
I mean, the reaction I had to that was just that it's tragic. It's tragic, it's wrong, it's unacceptable. Now, I felt the title maybe would be better as "Seattle Is Failing," because I think we're still at a point where we could deal with this. I mean, the 2015 homeless count numbers were 3,700, and in the last four years, they've exploded to over 12,000. So that means the city is failing. The city is failing to-- The city is failing to protect people who are in those situations, and the city is failing to protect everyone else. It's a city of 800,000 people with over 12,000 homeless. We have $6 billion a year we generate in tax revenue. You cannot tell me that is not enough to deal with this problem. If it was a quarter of a million people, I could understand, but it's under 15,000. And by the same token, we've got the opportunity to support the police, to go out and do their job, because the truth is, if someone defecates in front of a police officer and they're not arresting them, that's wrong. That means something is going bad in this city, and it's a failure. And we can change that, we just need to do it now.
Yeah, so for all the people in this room, I'm a Seattle resident my entire life. Seattle's my home. I didn't move here, I did not come out of nowhere. I have lived Seattle my entire life. This is my city, and the act of report was a misrepresentation of our city. We can come together collectively, we can use transparency with the donation money, the report in Como News, and the act reflects the Seattle, Washington. We are all good people, and like, we're not dying. We're trying to live, we're trying to elevate, we're trying to fix the homeless, we're trying to fix the, we're all trying to do in a positive way. And I represent small business owners, and I live in Seattle. So the whole Como report, what I picked out of it, it was just a misrepresentation of Seattle money.
Next question. And I, only one of you actually has, has a history with this, so you can answer however you like. How would you have voted on the Amazon head tax?
I don't really quite know how to answer this question, because I voted on the head tax, and I voted on it twice. Actually, I voted on it more than twice. The head tax, or the employee hours tax that was passed by the council and then later repealed, that was actually the third version of the employee hours tax. Again, this is the most regressive taxation structure in the nation, in Washington State. The folks who are most benefiting from our growth are not paying their fair share. And we need a way, a way locally until we can fix the taxation structure in our state. We need a local, a local solution to make sure that, again, the folks that are most benefiting from our growth in our city are paying their fair share to address issues that are being created by that growth. Address issues like increased costs of housing, because wealthy people are moving here for these high-paying jobs and driving up the cost of housing and increasing rents that other people are unable to afford.
Thank you. I would have voted against the head tax, had it gone to city council, I had it come out on ballot, I would have voted against it there, too. The solution to generating additional revenue, if that's what we need, is not to tax business and make it more difficult to hire and retain employees, it's to work with our businesses, whether they be the Amazons, and the Microsofts, and the Bowings, or the small businesses, some of whom actually would have been subjected to this. And I've spoken with a lot of small business owners who were greatly frustrated by that potential, and we're glad to see the tax repeal. We have a wealth of talent and education and idea power in this city that we can harness in a way that'd be much more productive than a couple hundred dollars a head per employee in this city. And we also need to send a message that we're supportive of business, we're supportive of families, we're supportive of jobs.
I would have voted against it. It's simple. Now, possibly, the task force that had been a panel to come up with ideas on how to deal this and how to get extra money, maybe they could have done a better job if they had been empowered to find inefficiencies in our current government right now in places that there could be money instead of just throwing out a tax. I also would have come to the people and said exactly, what are we going to do with this money, and why do we need this now? And when you're not working collaboratively with businesses, and you're talking about taxing businesses like, you know, grocery stores, and, you know, seafood produce places, and rehab centers like we have here in West Seattle, you're dealing with people that that money is either going to get passed on to the end user, which is us, or it's money that they can't afford in their bottom line, which is why I think the task force could have done a much better job. But the fact is, that tax was about not explaining to us where it was going, and we already have way too much money that's going into a black hole that I don't see where the money goes and what deliverables we get for it.
Yeah, so the Amazon head tax, I would have not voted on it. I did not approve of it. All my brothers are ironworkers. There was ones at City Hall, we was at City Hall protesting it, we was there. So I just, I said, there's no transparency or clarity in why that they want to tax the businesses who are profiting. I represent small business owners. I'm a small business owner in West Seattle. So I represent business owners. And there's no clarity or reason to tax people who are doing successful situations, that take care of their family, and why that they should suffer with a tax that has no actual clarification of where it goes. And that's why I did not approve of the Amazon tax, and I'm a Seattle resident. Thank you.
Yeah, so for me, I wouldn't have authored it if I was District One, and I would not have voted for it. The council knew from secret polling, we found out later, that we didn't want it as this city, but they chose to go for it anyways. And it wasn't until the issue blew up that they actually go, went back and voted to repeal it. It was only going to create 581 houses over 10 years. That wasn't enough, that wasn't even enough houses to cover the people that were living under the West Seattle Bridge at the time, because that was prior to this week. We need to understand the fundamentals, the fundamentals of homelessness. The number one cause of homelessness is losing your job. If we're chasing jobs away, good-paying jobs away, we need to rethink a strategy of whether that really is a useful solution towards homelessness. We know, as a community, it shouldn't have went through, it should have went to the ballot box at least, but either way, I wouldn't have voted for it, and I wouldn't have authored it.
Okay, let's switch back to specifically, we're talking about a lot of citywide issues. Let's switch to District One. Brendan, what would be your top priority for, if elected, your top priority for District One?
My top priority for District One is homelessness, which relates to public safety. I think I've already discussed that a little bit, and I believe part, part of the question might have to do with District One specific issues. So one thing I, I would make my priority as it relates specifically to District One, as opposed to the entire city, would be our emergency preparedness. We are obviously a peninsula, and we rely very heavily on the West Seattle Bridge. In the event that there's an earthquake or some other natural disaster, we would effectively be cut off from downtown for a long period of time. We need to make sure we have the resources and the planning within District One for us to be self-sustaining and be able to survive for a period, probably at least several weeks, before we're able to reconnect with downtown. That would involve helicopter service for getting people to emergency rooms downtown and throughout the rest of the region. So I guess emergency preparedness is my District One priority.
My top priority for District One is specifically getting the Purple Line back onto the table for SP3, to make sure that we have a tunnel that brings an underground light rail to West Seattle. It doesn't put a giant concrete monstrosity running right through the middle of our neighborhood. The fact is, one of the reasons we took down the Viaduct was to remove that barrier between the downtown and the waterfront, and now the talk is, let's just throw a giant barrier here. And I think that is a tremendous mistake. Luckily, we're in a situation where the last homeless count here was 207 people. We have a different level of that urgency here in District One than we do citywide. So for me, that biggest thing is working on making sure that we do not have raised light rail coming through here, something that we will have to live with and under for a very long time.
Can you repeat the question one more time? Yeah, what would be your top priority given District One? What would be your top priority in District One?
My top priority in District One would be to remove the RVs by Del Ridge or by the, by the fitness center. I would, number one would be the Seeline, where fair enforcement doesn't harass the elderly's. My number one other priority would make sure that the Greenway Pass on 42nd Avenue, they had proposed, would make sure pedestrians safely, I would make sure Junction is pedestrians safely from cars loitering and from accidents. And I would, my other priority would be, I would make sure that small businesses are represented in West Seattle District, and make sure that the Amazon is moving to the, on 42nd right there, Amazon's coming with the wholesale foods, a whole food market. I would make sure that small businesses are represented in the new gentrification that's coming on in Seattle. Thank you.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, homelessness is what we really need to address. The public has very loudly said that we are not doing this correctly. We continue to take more and more funds and throw it at the services side and expect this issue to be solved. As we, we see the council continues to put more focus and funds on it, it's not getting better. It's the compassion side of me. There are people who say that SOS don't care, multiple people I've talked to don't care about the homeless. That is not correct. All of us, it's all of our responsibility as a community to take care of these individuals and to work on an individualized basis. Right now, on the council, we don't have anyone who specializes in this type of experience. We need to have somebody on the council that doesn't just listen to the echo chamber, that really does understand the numbers and the statistics behind this, and to find real solutions to this.
I, as a member of the elected leaders group for Sound Transit, happen to agree that the Purple Line should be back on the table. I was the lone person at the elected leaders group who spoke in favor of keeping the Purple Line on the tunnel. That said, a big priority of mine, if reelected, is going to be delivering Sound Transit 3 to West Seattle on time and on budget. We are lucky enough that our line, our segment of the line is going to be delivered first, and I want to make sure that that occurs. In addition, I'm a generalist. I want to make sure that city services are delivered to our district from Alki to Del Ridge to South Park to Highland Park. I want to make sure that the city is serving your needs, whether or not it's fixing lights that are broken on your street, or boarding up a derelict building that's in your neighborhood, or getting park, basic park maintenance. That is the thing that I love working on for you.
Okay, we're at two, right? Who's first one? From the audience, why does Seattle have such a high property crime rate?
Well, I mean, one of the issues is we have a completely understaffed police department here. I mean, we're looking at the numbers that we had in 1968 are the numbers we have now. Boston is a city that's slightly smaller than us, yet they have 1,600 police officers, and we're around 1,000. So one of the problems is they just don't have the manpower to be able to respond. And I also think there's a bit of an edict from the city that's saying, we're going to prioritize down some of the property crimes because, well, the victims, you know, you've just lost something material. And so the truth is, we need to work on the response times, we need to make sure the police are properly staffed. And another big part of this problem is that revolving door that we've got with, with the low-level offenders that just come in and out. And again, if you don't have a transitional program for those to be managed so that they're dealing with the underlying problems, you know, like if you heard in the "Seattle Is Dying" report, the guy who's just turned into the fact that he loves stealing and nobody stops him. You know, my truck has been broken into when I had one, my house was broken into, my parents' house was broken into, and it's because we're not doing a good enough job protecting the people.
Can you repeat the question? Sure. Why does Seattle have such a high property crime rate?
So Seattle has such a high property crime rate, it's based on that they don't charge the offenders with misdemeanor offenses. And based on the prosecutor, which is Daniel Sanderbury, who's going to be elected, they don't charge them, so they release them. So it's a catch-and-release program, and we cannot do nothing about the catch-and-release program, but if we could do something about it, we would charge them and beg them to stay in county, but we can't stay in county. So property crime rate cannot be changed based on that we don't recharge them. And it's a misdemeanor offense, so it's a catch-and-release program right now. And we've got to put that in programs in King County Correctional System to actually charge the offenders with a long term set. Thank you.
So I do agree that we don't properly support our police department. And the reason I get that is from my conversation with us, with our first responders. We actually just instituted a pay raise to be very competitive in the market, but they don't feel supported by City Hall. We know that because they're telling us that. Us as a community have to let officers know that we appreciate them. And part of the, the way we do that is to ensure that the arrests they make actually do go and get charged, that we do have a system where they do feel that their job is worth doing. Way too many times, we're finding individuals using stealing to finance their drug trade. And I just had my van stolen from, our delivery from popcorn. So if your popcorn is late to your store, I apologize, and that's because our van was stolen. But for us, again, we have to support our first responders so that they can correctly address this.
Yes, staffing is a serious issue for the Seattle Police Department. We have a 200 officer increase staffing goal. Eighty percent of large police departments across the country have significant vacancies. We are, nationally, we have a 44% vacancy rate, and so we need to get more creative with recruiting officers. Perhaps, we just recently passed legislation authorizing, allow hire and new hire incentives, but we need to do more, we need to be more creative to bring people onto the force so that people see that these are good jobs. We also need to work to allow officers to have more proactive time doing investigations. And I think one way that we can do that is by jump-starting the implementation of the Community Service Officer Program that the council funded two years ago and still has not been implemented. This is a really important program that can free up officers' time for both nine-way response and proactive policing.
Thank you. The reason we have such a high property crime rate in the city of Seattle is city government has adjusted the priorities for the SPD away from enforcement and more towards documentation practices. Some of this is understandable, based on the requirements of our consent decree, but there's also, there's the reality that not only are we understaffed, and not only is there recidivism and a revolving door, but the officers that we do have have to spend a great deal of time documenting a variety of incidents that never used to have to be, that were never requirements before. So that takes officers off the street. Also, in a culture where our officers do not feel supported, the, the message to them is that it's not worth it to engage in proactive policing, stopping people based on Terry versus Ohio, reasonable suspicion. That actually preempts a lot of these property crimes. And it allows the person who otherwise probably would have been preempted prior to committing the crime to go on their way and victimize them.
Okay, here's going to be an interesting one. Do you support safe injection sites? We'll start with you, Isaiah. And do you support them in District One?
No. I do not support getting high in West Seattle. As a small business owner with the homeless situation and the opiate epidemic, no. I do not support violent behavior, do not support that that is a great solution to people's health problems. First of all, an injection site is a legal, legal, we are agreeing with opiates, like we are agreeing with getting heroin or opiates and heroin, right? So no. And I don't, I don't, I just don't think it's good for small business owners in West Seattle with the homeless situation we've got, with the epidemic going on. I don't, it's a violent behavior, and I'm done with the violent behavior as a Seattle resident. I don't think we should have any more handouts for any, it's okay to get high in Seattle. Thank you.
No. Here's the issue with safe injection sites. We have seen how they have come out in Vancouver. But I want help for the individuals that are addicted. We need to have better plans of providing opiate blockers and drugs to come off of drugs. I wish my father had those. Our system isn't set up. I wish we could say yes, so that we can pass them through and get them some help, but right now, our system isn't set up well for that. We need to be working with the University of Washington, with their healthcare professionals, to actually find a solution with them and with our communities to find a pathway for these individuals to get off drugs. It breaks my heart, absolutely, seeing these individuals out on the street. And I know it does everyone here, too. But we can't be inviting safe injection sites because we can't be having the property crime and the community that comes along with it.
So this is a, this is a flyer that's around Pigeon Point right now, and it says there is a planned safe injection site for Pigeon Point. And it implicates hate-free Del Ridge as part of the inspiration for this safe injection site. This is not the way to have a rational conversation about how to address people's basic needs to have light- to have life-saving assistance. This flyer tells people to call me. This is creating a panic about a, an approach that a peer review report just released, not yet covered by local press, shows that current overdose rates, a hypothetical safe injection site is projected to annually reverse 167 overdose, prevent six overdose deaths, 45 hospitalizations, 90 emergency department visits, and 92 emergency medical service deployments. The site would facilitate the enrollment of 74 clients a year, and the benefits are over $5 million a year at a cost of just a little over $1 million a year.
That is, I didn't get the yes or no part. Do you do support?
I support safe injection sites.
Do you support a safe injection site in District 1?
No, this would not be the right place for safe injection.
So, yes, but not in District 1?
Correct.
No, I do not support safe injection sites anywhere in the city of Seattle, anywhere in the state of Washington. In fact, I will argue there's no such thing as a safe injection site because there's no way to safely inject heroin into your body. We need to not create a harmful place for people to engage in this harmful illegal activity. Instead, they need treatment. They need treatment and they need to not be enabled to pursue their addiction. In Vancouver, they saw at least a tenfold increase in the amount of needles in public spaces due to the fact that people who went to the safe injection sites were able to take as many as they want and no longer felt the need to clean them after use, they just discarded them. Also, another concern I have as a law enforcement professional is the general culture of lawlessness that would emanate from the safe injection site. Someone selling heroin outside of the site may feel more empowered. Our officers wouldn't feel supported to intervene. I'm just, I'm very concerned and very against these sites. Thank you.
Would you just ask it again?
Sure. Do you support safe injection sites? And as a follow-up, do you support them in District 1?
No, absolutely not. It is simple. We need on-demand services for people who are in crisis. We need enough beds so that people don't get turned away and told to come back in a couple of weeks when we've got something available. And we need to deal with the substance abuse issues. And exactly like Brandon said, there is nothing safe about injecting heroin no matter what you do. So, we need to improve those services. The answer is absolutely not, safe injection sites.
Hey, Jesse, we are back to you. The West Seattle, West Seattle's Alaska Junction is barely recognizable as small businesses are being priced out and, and rental increases and tall buildings proliferate. What would you do on the council to preserve the unique charm of West Seattle's main business district?
I love West Seattle businesses. We have such a core commons in our community. We have Husky Deli, we have, yeah, we have Cupcake Royale, we have these great places, Menache that are, that are part of our community. But we're going to change. We are a major metropolitan area, and what we really need to do is ensure that our businesses feel supported. I can't go in and say, I'm not going to allow any type of development because I am not a "not in my backyard" person. I can't go out there and advocate for a position that say, "Not here in West Seattle." What I can say is, we need to reach out to our community business partners and ensure that they have a place when we make changes, that they, that they are welcome here, that we want people to shop here with them, that we support them. I run a small business, I run a couple of them, and we are part of the community. We are your neighbors, we are ways that people fight classism, we are ways that people create jobs. Yeah, it's important for us to support our community.
So, a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, folks got together, worked with the Southwest Historic Society to nominate a couple of buildings in the junction as landmarks. We could do more, more of that. There are a number of other properties that have been identified as possible landmarks. We could even go a step further. We could look at creating a historic district in the junction as a way of protecting properties. But again, as you said, we, we do have to work with the property owners because often the property owners are not the same as the businesses. And so, you, if you're looking at creating a historic district in order to preserve the buildings, you really need to be working hand-in-hand with the owners of those buildings. Another approach is an approach that we use with the discussions during the mandatory housing affordability zoning discussions, is that in allowing greater density in a business district, you require the ground floor have small spaces that small businesses can't afford.
Thank you. The West Seattle Junction is a truly special place within the city. It's something that really brings a lot of character to West Seattle. It's, it's unique in a major city. You have free parking, and it's very walkable, you have a nice variety of shops and restaurants. It's something I think we need, and if we lose it, it's gone forever. Okay, I mean, stuff like that doesn't re-perpetuate. So, given that this, this has to do with quality of life in West Seattle, it has to do with the character of our community, is a feature that I believe caused a lot of people to move here when they chose to purchase their homes. I think the first step is to convene a meeting with the community, get input from the community as to what you want to see at the junction. What about this very special part of our community is important to you to retain, even at the cost of potential developments or, or funds? How is it that you want this to impact your quality of life in, in Seattle and really go from there? I don't think it's my place to tell you what you want there, I want to hear from you before we make any moves with the junction.
The biggest thing is you've got to support the businesses. You can't have a city that just increases business license fees, that puts more pressure on, pressure on small business owners, that looks at them and saying, "Hey, you're the ones with money, keep giving to us." No, you use the Office of Economic Development, you actually support the small businesses. Then you make sure things like the free parking behind Husky Deli stays as free parking and doesn't get developed. You make sure that we have an underground light rail station here so that it's not above ground and completely destroys the character of the district. With MHA, you work with the neighborhoods to support their neighborhood plan. You go back to them and actually update the neighborhood plan because, look, growth is going to happen. Growth is fine, this is a good thing, our city is booming. You know, at one point, the Smith Tower was the largest building west of the Mississippi. Clearly, that has changed. You know, you look at a picture of 35th Avenue in 1905, it was a little bit different. You don't have to lose character when you grow, but you do when you don't pay attention to the past, you don't learn from your lessons, and you don't support the people that live in the neighborhood.
Well, I'm a small business owner in West Seattle, and I would just, like, I represent small business owners. If it's small business owners, I represent. I would pass the Zone Berish Act, the same thing that the New Jersey mayor passed, was that when big corporations come in, like how there's, right now it's coming in, so Woodertake Apartments, right down the street, Whole Foods Market is moving in. So, I would pass the Zone Berish Act that keeps small businesses intact so that when corporations move in, if we have a pharmacy across the street, another corporation can't come in and compete. I would pass the Zone Berish Act in West Seattle to protect my district from outside corporations because I'm a small business owner, this is my district.
A couple of years, a few years ago, Seattle City Council radically increased the business license fees. That money was supposed to go to hiring more police officers. That doesn't appear to have happened. What would you do to actually get and recruit and retain more police officers in Seattle? Lisa?
Those dollars were absolutely used for hiring officers. That was the purpose. And just to be clear, the business license fee, businesses, 85% of businesses were held harmless from that increase. It's only the top 15% of the largest businesses that actually had to pay the increase. But to answer your question about recruitment, as I mentioned before, we definitely need to get creative with our, our approach to meeting our staffing goals. And I think, again, creating some sort of a cadet program, working, something like the Explorers Program that currently exists, but doing more to link the youth who are interested in law enforcement to actually going that next step and perhaps actually going from the Explorers Program to some sort of a, again, a junior cadet program. And, you know, again, we enacted something called preference points so that we could prioritize people who have different language skills. That's another way to get more people to apply.
The SPD's staffing has been relatively stagnant for at least 40 years, so I don't know how that money was spent for hiring. It may have been a shift in the budget, I don't know. What we need to do in order to grow the SPD is make it a place that people want to work, make the city of Seattle a place where officers feel valued, where they feel like if they go out and do a good job, they'll be supported. If there is some sort of issue, of course, we'll deal with it like we always have. But the reality, and I speak very genuinely in this because I've had the privilege of serving as an officer, a detective, a sergeant, a lieutenant, I've served in compliance, I've taught training classes to thousands of people, I worked in patrol for about, for about half my career. The problem isn't lack of budgets, and I'm, and just to be honest, it's not preference points, it's nothing like that, it's that we are not a desirable location for perspectives and we're not a desirable location as a department for the officers we currently have. We're losing them faster than they can be replaced, and part of the solution is to put a cop on city council.
Well, one of the things you do is you don't vote against the reimbursement money from the federal government that the city actually spent, you get it to the police officer. The next thing we do is you actually make sure that when you're talking about adding jobs, you're talking about what are the net jobs, not gross, not adding new positions, but looking at the fact that with the attrition rate and with the people retiring and the people getting disgusted, we have negative growth in the police department. And again, this is an issue of if you don't understand the numbers, you can't manage the numbers. You got to make sure they're paid effectively, but you got to make sure they're supported. Like Brandon said, I mean, I talk to hundreds of police officers and the job I have, and everything I hear from them is they feel, "Why should I work here? Why should I deal with this? The city council doesn't back me, I don't feel like the city supports me doing my job," and they can't live in the city, so this is another tie into the affordable housing issue. But the fact is, we have to pay better, we have to look at the academy, and we just have to support them so they want to work here.
Can you repeat the question again? Sure. What would you do to increase the number of officers, reduced version of the question, what would you do to increase and retain officers, Seattle Police Officers?
Well, I would just grow as a policy, the procedure they just implemented with the $15,000 bonus, hiring bonus, and I would let that, see how that plays out because right now, they just have a new policy with $15,000 hiring bonus to help recruit Seattle officers from other departments to make sure that you effectively cause the training. But right now, we have to see if that works. That's my idea. I would go with that program that is implemented.
Jesse?
Yeah, I, I don't want to take money away from the officers, but at least with my conversations with them, it is, it is about being supported. That's why they're leaving. They do not feel supported here in this community. And I can tell you, as a small business owner, it is way too expensive to run small businesses within this community. We actually should be talking about lowering the fees for small businesses to come out to spur an economic fight against classism and people who are born with, at the lower echelons of financial stability. It is a great way for a community to be embracing of our businesses. We should not be raising fees on them, we shouldn't have raised fees on them, and we should make it more advantageous for us to run businesses within our community.
All right, we'll make a, we'll make a quick lightly browned question here. I think we're starting with Reddit. Just on a letter grade basis, how would you grade the city council over the past two years?
Phil, B minus.
Isaiah?
I would give them a good C. I'd give them a good C.
Jesse?
Yeah, I would definitely not pass them. I'm not talking about anybody specific here, but I'm going to say that our city council has failed us.
So, the city council is a lawmaking body and a budgeting body. We don't implement the laws and we don't spend the money. We allocate the money. It's the mayor who implements the laws and allocates the money and besides the spenders. I give, I give the city council B minus.
Okay, I think we're starting with, Phil. What would you do, we've talked a lot about small business and supporting small business, lowering fees, what else would you do to retain existing legacy businesses, some of which, when they do, when their building gets purchased, they don't have a place to go, it's really not a place in Seattle. What would you do to support existing legacy businesses?
Well, you work with the people that are coming in, who are building new buildings, if they aren't involved with the businesses who are in them, and you advocate for them. You talk to them about the fact that we want to keep this because this is about the flavor of our community and what we've known, and it's our neighborhood. And so, this is, goes back to a little bit about the neighborhood plans and how we can protect some of those businesses. The other thing is, actually listen to and work with the businesses more, and not just the ones that'll show up at a meeting, but go out and talk to everyone, talk to the Chamber of Commerce, talk to the Neighborhood Associations, find out what's out there, and if a building's coming up for sale, maybe work on trying to get some of the business owners together to be able to buy it, to be able to keep it local. We've got some incredible people in this neighborhood who own property and who are part of this community and would want to save and protect it. And one of the things the city can do is, you know when things are coming up for sale, so you stay on top of it, you work with people, not against them, to be able to keep the neighborhoods the way they are.
Isaiah?
Repeat the question, what is the legacy business?
So, what would you do to preserve existing businesses, particularly long-term businesses in Seattle, some, some of which get forced out when buildings get purchased or buildings get developed because they have to move on because they don't go long enough?
So, what's a long-term business in Seattle? What would clarify as a long-term business? How many years to make a long-term, and what would define legacy?
Let's say five years plus.
Would that be a small business or corporations?
Small business.
And would there be buying the building or would there be just re-locating? We need details to this question. All right, great answers.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine. So, let's just say, for example, I'm reading, I'm reading from here, so let's just say, for example, you had a business in town, your lease was up, your landlord didn't want to renew your lease, your business was successful, but the landlord wants to sell the building to someone else.
And I would deposit on a new building and police, my business was successful because I do have a small business in West Seattle, and I would put a deposit on a new building, and I would get the lease, and I would move to a new building. But if there is a legacy, is there, is it entitled behavior? Is that what you're saying, that I have the title to a new location because I have a longevity revenue stream in West Seattle? So, that should give you a handout? Explain it to me, I'm trying to tell you.
Simply, would, does the city have any role? Do you see the city as? Fair enough.
Thank you.
I believe that a city does have a role, and it really has to do with education. So, what we have is, we have economic development in what's called an opportunity zones that was appointed by the governor in different places within King County and even in Seattle. And so, when a business, small business gets displaced, they need to know that they have places to go, that, that we can help find them a place, but we can't just, we can't just let the small businesses, when a building gets purchased out, just go away. They are crucial for our development.
So, small businesses that are legacy businesses are really tied to our city's history and our sense of identity. I've been working on developing a small business legacy program for the last two years, two and a half years. I'm actually going to be speaking at the Main Street, National Main Street Conference that's going to be here in West Seattle, is specifically a small business conference. I'm going to be talking about my efforts to create a legacy business program replicated on similar programs in San Francisco, but it's really about identifying the specific needs of particular businesses that the community identifies as legacy businesses, as, as important to those neighborhoods, and identifying the tools that are necessary to support those small businesses.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to speak with a number of business owners over the past few weeks, and consistently, what they tell me is they're highly frustrated, frustrated by the fact that there appear to be two sets of rules in the city. One for them and other people who choose to follow the rules, and one for the growing homeless population who appear to be living in RVs and intent encampments that in many situations are illegal, and yet in certain high, high-profile situations here in West Seattle have actually caused damage to some of our businesses. I spoke to one guy who was very frustrated because his business is surrounded by 10 RVs, the city charged him to clean up their trash. If we're, if we're serious about supporting business, we need to see everything as being hand-in-hand. Our homeless crisis, our public safety crisis, our lack of support for the police relates to the small business community. There aren't, there is a panacea to our problems, but if we start off by realizing what true justice is and we offer solutions, we will see a significant... we will see a significant uptick in support for small business.
Isaiah, I think we start this one with you. Do you support a city or a state income tax?
Do I support a city or a state income tax? No.
Yeah. I actually had a conversation with Dal Konstantin yesterday about this. And we do have a regressive tax structure. But one of the problems that we have, it's in the state constitution. Asking us this question on a city-level basis, you're actually asking us a macroeconomic policy. This city went out and passed a law trying to implement one when it knew it was against the state constitution. This is a question that actually needs to be answered in Olympia because that's what the constitution says. We need to make sure that we're focusing on economic policy that cities actually decide.
So that decision was based on, was a five-four decision from the nineteen twenties. And I think it's completely appropriate to, to ask the question again of our courts. We are one of, we are one of only seven states in the country that has no local income tax. Again, this is why we are not only the most regressive taxation system, but we are the least transparent. We don't know how much we're paying in taxes because it's mostly property taxes and sales taxes. It is the least stable taxation system in the nation. And the number of, of, of weeks that it takes a low-income person to pay off their taxes versus the, the number of days it takes a high-income person to pay off their year's worth of taxes is completely inequitable. It's less about getting more money. It's more about making sure that the people of means can contribute to maintaining the basic, the basic functions of government.
No, at this point, I do not support a city or a state income tax. I agree with the sentiment that we do have a regressive tax structure. And of course, that's based on the fact that everybody pays the same amount. And sales tax and property taxes are similar in that respect. But at this point, I don't think any level of government, city, county, or state, has the trust of the community to enact an income tax at any level, city or state, and then not bring sales taxes and head taxes and soda taxes and various other fees and financial penalties on people right back in. So I think we need to start with regaining trust in our government within the state of Washington. And then perhaps we can look at how to adjust tax policy. But at this point, I, I think we need to admit that we're expensive enough as it is and that we'd be putting people at a great deal of angst and risk by taxing them more without, or moving something first.
I mean, first, we're gonna have to see what happens because obviously the Supreme Court kicked that issue back down to the appellate court. So now we're gonna have to see what the Court of Appeals does with it. Once that happens and we find out whether or not this is something that we can actually do, then like Brandon just said, we gotta talk about it. We gotta look at the regressive tax system in this state and what can we do to fix it. And it's not just an income tax. Now, on the one hand, I would say that if people are talking about the fact we have tens of thousands of six-figure jobs coming here to Seattle, maybe that is one of the places. I mean, I know when I lived in New York, there was a city, a state, and a federal withholding that everybody paid. And so it's possible that that's one of the places that we should find money. But again, we've got to fix our tax structure first, not add new taxes. That is not the answer.
Okay, that brings us to our conclusion tonight. We want to thank everyone for participating in the forum, especially the candidates who came care enough to run for office and serve our city. Are we gonna be closing it? All right, then remember that part. And, and everyone gets, every candidate gets a closing statement. Uh, we'll start with Jesse.
Yeah, so my name is Isaiah Willoughby. I'm running for city council in District One, representing Seattle. I'm a Seattle resident my entire life. And I'm a solution for the homeless, the transparency where the money's going, the tax. I represent small business owners in West Seattle. And I would like, I was a nonpartisan, so I'd just like to say, I'm a small business owner in West Seattle and I'm a solution to West Seattle's problems. Thank you.
Like I said before, Seattle can do better. We've got tremendous potential in this city and the capacity to help people do better and be prosperous, and we need to. We need to fix the civic engagement in this city and actually be a government for all. We need to understand the money. We need to know what are the deliverables that we're getting for the money that we spend. And we need to understand where that money's going. And we need to work collaboratively. We have tremendous will in this city. I mean, look at the room here. This is proof that the city cares. The city, I don't think, is dying, but we need to fix it now. Every four years, we have the ability to have a mandate on the job performance of our local government. And this is public service. And so every four years, when there's an election, if things are not going right, you change it. This is the opportunity. And what I will tell you is, for the last twenty-five years, I have done a lot of things and especially over the last fifteen years as a public defender, I have some ways to change the city and I want to. So please, help us change the city and help me change the city.
Thank you all for attending this event. I believe we are all here for the same reason. We understand that our city is in crisis and that the status quo is not working. More of the same will not be acceptable. New leadership with a new way of understanding the problems we are facing is the only way to return to the Seattle values of safety, dignity, and justice for all. We are a smart city and we deserve smart government. I am proposing common sense solutions rooted in more than a decade of service to this city. I believe in taking a collaborative approach that ignores partisan politics and focuses on the common good. I believe that intervention coupled with enforcement and support for the SPD is the way to address our crises of homelessness and public safety. I believe in responsible stewardship and transparent use of city resources. I believe in cultivating a climate where small businesses can thrive. I believe in intentional development practices where population increases occur only as fast as our physical infrastructure, schools, and public transportation services can accommodate them. I believe that West Seattle and South Park are worth fighting for. Thank you.
As a resident of this community since, let's see, two thousand, I raised my daughter here. I've got grandchildren here. I love West Seattle and South Park. I love my district. I love working for you. I, we didn't talk very much about accountability. That's a big part of the work that I do on your behalf, on the behalf of the taxpayer. I led the council in passage of the results-based contracting framework for human service investments. I led the council also in ensuring that we have a new capital oversight structure. I said, I've said no to the streetcar. I want those dollars invested in real transit. I said no to pronto. I want to keep asking those tough questions on behalf of our taxpayers, not just here in District One, but across the city. We do need to be better stewards of our dollars and we need to make sure that we are doing a few things well as opposed to trying to do everything. And I, I really, it's about really focusing on some of the basics that we've talked about here today. Public safety, addressing homelessness, and building more housing.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Again, my name is Jesse Green. I, I love this community. I've been part of this community for seventeen years. My grandma went to West Seattle High School. My wife's a third-generation West Seattleite. I was born at Groove Health Hospital. I went to Seattle Central Community College. I just graduated from a first graduate program at Seattle University. I love this community. But what I can say, if you're not happy with how the current city council is, you're right. This is about transparency and accountability. Vote for what your heart tells you. If you want somebody that actually has real lived experience, someone who has experienced homelessness, someone who actually runs small businesses, who lives here and is part of this community, I would love to represent all of you. My cell phone number's on my card. Please, I would love to meet each one of you personally. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Okay, now, we want to thank everyone for participating in the forum tonight, especially the candidates who care enough to run for office and serve our city. We have an important decision to make. We urge all of you to engage in the democratic process here. Support your favorite candidate with your democracy vouchers. They've got a table here as well. And donations of time and money. We also encourage the candidates, we encourage the candidates to stick around and get to know the voters here and get the, and talk to your neighbors and friends, get the word out. If you're interested in learning more about Speak Out Seattle, visit their table in the back. We again want to thank the American Legion for donating the space, especially Keith. And the Millionaire Club charity for donating helpers.